On Monday, March eighth, twenty twenty one, at six o'clock P M. Can we get a roll call, please?
Brian, Jason, Samson?
Here.
Dean, here.
Here.
Dean, here.
Here.
This is.
Here.
One minute?
Here.
Okay, first item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Sandy, any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, council, please vote. Agenda is approved. It takes us into the first item, I think we'll pause on. Prairie Rivers was presented in another committee prior to us. So once they get here, we'll let them give their presentation. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any items need to be moved for separate consideration?
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Barb, any discussion on consent? Seeing none, council, please vote. And that is approved. Takes us into the public forum, which is time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than assistance on the agenda. No action may be taken. We do have Charlie Good here that wishes to address you. So let Charlie go up to the podium and state, maybe address for the record.
Sorry, I missed the earlier meeting. I just wanted to address the council. This would have been the first meeting I've been at where the lighting belonged Lincoln Way. And the first three meetings, I said, you know, about a pole in the middle of my driveway, a light pole put in the middle of my driveway. And each time I was kind of assured, well, that probably won't happen, that probably won't happen. But that's beside the point. So I'm here tonight and see that according to Sean, that's what they're thinking. And they're going to cut some of my access to my driveway off there to put that pole there. So my canopy has lit that corner since nineteen seventy seven. And if you would move the one light pole down closer to the alley and put another light pole where my rock is, probably be doing the same thing. Your lights would be a little bit ombre from each other. But if everybody remembers the light pole was in the middle of the driveway at Minsky's Pizza, how many times that thing was knocked down and replaced till it was finally abandoned? I can see that happening at my place. Businesses that are affected by this have not had their access affected other than during construction. This is going to affect my access totally, forever and ever and ever. My business, use of access, has a lot to do with what drives people to inform my store. So I would like, I just wanted to address you all. I'm sorry I missed the earlier meeting, but to have you take a look at the lighting issue there and how it would be. Sean said he's going to come over and look at it. But I did not realize and nobody had told me till tonight that. They took that power there. And that's my concern. I thought I'd just run back up here and hold confirm. So I got a little visit with each one of you about it. And y'all heard the same thing. And I appreciate the time you've given me to make my point.
Thanks, Charlie. Council, do you have anything for Charlie? And I think Sean and Andrew has both heard that, so I'm sure they can take a look and report back.
Appreciate it. Because that affects me forever. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. So that will, Karen, is there anyone else that notified you that wish to speak in public forum? So they'll close the public forum. This is Old Business A, ordinance number ten sixteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, an ordinance amending chapter sixty six, load and weight restrictions of the city of Nevada, Iowa, by moving the truck route. Third and final reading. Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Brian, discussion. Council, please vote. Side B, Prairie Request Number Three for the wastewater treatment facility phase water treatments project for windhold excavating, net of sixty seven thousand thirty six dollars and thirteen cents. Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Barb, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote. Approved. This is to item C, discussion appropriate follow-up regarding emergency measures during COVID nineteen. This resolution number forty seven C, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. This is our usual monthly revisit with the emergency resolution. Anything you'd like to discuss or change?
Are there a lot of out-of-state travel or trainings for city business that happen normally outside of COVID?
Um, I can think of a couple, but not too many.
I guess more importantly, like, is there something that we're skipping out on that we could be benefiting?
I guess it's currently a lot of those trains are probably not virtual, right? Timing for this train's last morning.
We still have fifty percent.
I think that's what partner represents. Have you guys still been doing fifty percent in case?
We have. If you have a desire to change that.
Has there been any issue with that?
Um, no, not yet. We've got a larger event that's coming up in May, which will probably be impacted by that. So, but for the time being, everybody's made work.
Is the May events?
We're looking at increased vaccination, increased possibility of increasing that number. Would that give them enough time to plan in either direction or?
I can't answer that question. And I think I'd have to give them a call. Okay. So we can certainly do that and then follow up with the next.
Fast because obviously things are starting to move faster with vaccinations. And so obviously we want to be proactive, but also cautious still.
Discussion. Seeing no changes, we move on to new business. There is new business A, resolution number seven nine, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Resolution approving agreement between the city of Nevada and public professional maintenance employees local two thousand three I U P A T. Period of July first, twenty twenty one to June thirty, twenty twenty four, and authorizing and directing signing of the same approval of the union contract. Move to approve. Second. Jason and Dane, is there any discussion or staff input before the vote?
Um, I'll just point out a couple of the bigger changes that we have in this contract. From the city side, well, obviously, one of the big things that we talked about was the implementation of the new wage matrix. And the union was receptive to that. And so that was really good. So you will see in their appendix A is now that twelve year or that twelve step process to get to the maximum wage. And then it's a one percent increase in year two and three. So, um, so I think that fulfills everyone's needs. It will hopefully be able to get your non-union folks on the same schedule as your union folks moving forward. So one of the bigger things for the union was the hours of work for the police officers. We spent, I don't know, three days talking about that. But I think that everyone is happy with how that, with how that landed. And of course, it really only matters when you guys are full staff. So for now, it's status quo. But I think the officers were happy with the new hours of work proposal in there. You historically have had a floating holiday, and that has now been switched to remove the floating holiday and have Martin Luther King Day recognized by the city. So that changed on the holidays. And then there was a minor adjustment to the shift differential. What else we had in here? Those are the highlights. The changes you see in there on the health insurance are actually changes that were from the M O U from this fall. So those are just rewritten into the contract now. So those aren't actual changes that are occurring now. So anyways, I was pleased with how everything ended up.
It seems like it went very smoothly this time around. Better last time. It lasted a long time last time.
It went on a long time, yes.
I'm glad that we can meet those wages where they need to be.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved. So I have to let us know if we lost our Facebook feed because the Wi-Fi went out on my computer. So moves to new business B, resolution number eighty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, a resolution to fix a date for a public hearing on proposal to enter into a sewer revenue law and disbursement agreement and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed thirty nine million nine hundred thousand dollars. Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Barb, discussion. Okay, seeing none, council, please vote. Approved. This to I C, resolution number eighty one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Resolution approving third addendum to the purchase agreement for real estate not arising clerk to issue payment. A moot. So Brian and Jason, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Not moot. There you go.
And that is approved. Takes us to item B, resolution eighty two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. A resolution amending and approving the appendix to the city code. Move to approve. Second. Dane and Brian, discussion.
I had a question on item that's not being changed. And Jeremy, maybe you can answer. We talked a while back about when we were trying to get some stuff for one of the five K races about cones and barricades. Kind of pricing yourself out of anybody ever wanting to use them. And their safety issue that we would probably want to promote people to actually use when they're eating them. Is that something we could cut the cost of to a deposit only or replacement cost or something like that instead? I don't know what your opinion is or something that we could look at in the future.
Replacement cost would be higher than the price you go at. But.
I didn't know if that was something you were in favor of, and I didn't want to put you on the spot, but.
I'm not really in favor of, you know, just. We use our stuff.
Right. I'm just thinking like for special events, using a street, like when we did the five K having cones and barricades to give more exposure. About safety. And I would think we want people to use as much stuff as possible. I didn't know if we could. That with a lower cost or not, but. I know I thought I talked with you about that a while back and you were more in favor of that, but.
Our labor putting them out, picking them up. And there's companies that do supply driver control stuff.
I mean, fifteen bucks a cone. It's kind of expensive, but. They priced us out when we were looking for it. We decided to not even bother with it and we had people running on the street. So a lower cost for cones and barricades for a one-day thing might help out, but.
I think entering that one too.
I know we've borrowed the barricades from Main Street before. I don't think they have road cones or if they do, I'm not aware of it.
I think they do, but it's a small amount. It's like it's a promotion, a promotion of safety to have those out there more often, but. It's fine.
Other discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. Approved. Takes us to item E, resolution eighty three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Resolution approving a local trade assistance contract by a region, council of governments in the city of Nevada, Iowa.
Okay, approve.
Second. Dane and Dane, discussion. Council, please vote. Takes us to item F, resolution number eighty four, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Resolution to approve the natural gas service agreement with Interstate Power and Light Company to supply gas service to the wastewater treatment facility at six two five one two, two hundred and seventieth street. Move to approve. Second. Jason, Barb, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote. And that is approved. Take this to item G, resolution number eighty five, twenty twenty, twenty twenty. Resolution to approve the gas facilities extension agreement advance with Interstate Power and Light Company to sell gas to the city of Nevada at the wastewater treatment facility at six two five one two, two hundred and seventieth street. Approve. Second. Jason, Dane, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote. Approved. Takes us to item H, approve purchase of two new chlorine analyzers to the wastewater treatment plant. You approve. Second. Brian, Barb, discussion.
I really want to extend my appreciation for the work that was in, the information that was in the council action form and the preference that our staff had that helped my. It helped me make the decision pretty quickly that they wanted to stay with the same type of equipment.
Seeing none, council, please vote. Okay, that is approved. Takes us to I, resolution number eighty six, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Resolution expressing intent to provide economic development support to the Verbio Nevada LLC redevelopment project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me this evening. And a special thank you to Jordan and Karen for helping to get this on the agenda. I apologize it being delayed and having to be added to the agenda as an amendment. The resolution before you tonight is kind of a sister resolution to the resolution you guys approved back in February for the RISE grant. This is for the Iowa Economic Development Authority financial assistance application that's going before the state of Iowa, March nineteenth. So I thought I'd visit for a quick minute on what the Verbio expansion is. They are looking at spending another eighty nine dollars on their facility to put in an integrated ethanol production facility. So this is different than traditional ethanol production. The state has recognized that as such because it will be a fully integrated system, mineralizing the natural gas, the renewable natural gas that they're producing out there as part of their process. Will allow them to achieve a much greener, a much lower carbon intensity on the ethanol produced, making them significantly more competitive in markets like California that reward that. And will ultimately push out Brazilian ethanol, which is heavily imported into the state of California for its low carbon intensity. So ultimately, this will make Iowa ethanol that much more competitive throughout the country. It will continue to put Nevada on the map. They will be adding an additional forty eight jobs to the facility out there. And as Greg Faith, who runs the facility out there, reminded me, what was that last Wednesday? They've already outlined projects, projects three, four, five, and six as potential continued potential investment that they can make out their facility. So I think the more that we can do to continue to support this great company that took what was an asset that could still be resting out there and are doing something with it and then continuing to invest in this community. I think is tremendous. You know, Verbio is building a facility in India right now at the same time. They purchased a facility in Canada about the same time they purchased this facility, they bought land down in Kansas. They found our process here so supportive and so easy for them. They've continued to invest here and still withheld investing into that Kansas land. So the more we can do to continue to support this great industry, the stronger we're going to continue to be as we continue to build them up out there. So I just ask for your support on this resolution tonight and we'll follow with it. And there'll be a formal press release announcement to come on the project.
Just add some comments I've received lately regarding the previous DuPont development agreement that was bought out by DuPont. And so the investment by the taxpayers was recouped in that buyout process. So with Verbio, there'd be some development going that would be developed and structured to also protect the taxpayers. But I would agree with John. I'm enthusiastic about the project. It's been proven, it's happening elsewhere, so it's not an unproven technology. And the fact that there are multiple steps that follow is also promising for the supply here as well to continue.
I agree, I'd like to move to approve resolution A six.
I'll second that.
And Sandy opens up discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Thank you all for your support. Appreciate it.
And then we'll back up to Prairie Rivers of Iowa, Story County Wide Monitoring Plan. Okay, so Prairie Rivers, you are welcome to address the council.
Yes, I have a presentation to share with you.
Okay.
An overview of the tenure, Story County Water Monitoring and Surveillance.
Hey, you should be able to share your screen if you need to.
Yeah, we want to thank all the sponsors for this project and want to thank Jordan Cook and Jeremy Riddle for representing City of Nevada on our planning team. We had a great group of folks from the county, from four cities, from our SWOAT district, from nonprofit sectors, talking about how we can be more deliberate about collecting water quality data and work on conservation. I think this is our, the cooperation from this planning team is already showing some dividends and getting a successful grant approved for City of Nevada. The purpose statement for the project was to collect and analyze water sampling data to increase residents' knowledge and understandings, identify problems in our watersheds, and support and improve water quality. What's at stake here, I think, is number one, a lot of I ones grew up playing in their backyard creek. And we want to make sure that our kids can do the same without being exposed to pathogens from human animal waste. Monitoring data can tell us if that's a problem, so we can take precautions and hopefully work with our neighbors to get it cleaned up. The other issue is Gulf Hypoxia, and there's a lot of farmers in our area as well as wastewater treatment plants and cities working on this issue. If we have good information, we'll have a better idea of what's working and can make good use of our resources. So we came up with this plan, four pages of goals and then eighty pages of supporting material. Going to be released at the end of the month and encourage you if you find this interesting to read it and we'll be happy to follow up with you. Plan answered, why do we want data? There've been a lot of efforts already going on. One of the things that came up was the end of the D N R support for volunteer monitoring. And they made it clear that we'd need local leadership if we're going to continue that. We had some watershed projects going on in the South Skunk River and a county-wide assessment that, where we saw a need for data to support those conservation activities as well as an existing project in the Squaw Creek watershed. Where we were kind of needing to regroup and make better use for information and just finding that there was a lot of people out there collecting data, but we weren't really pulling it together and making good use of it. And so the report goes over what information was available. We found that there was over two hundred thousand records out there for Story County, and it just was scattered across a lot of different databases. So we've been working on pulling that together and making sense of it. And so there's a lot of information from volunteers, looking at different creeks on the same day that shows us kind of where the hotspots are for different pollution. There was a U S geologic survey study that gives us a scorecard of what's affecting fish and the critters that they eat in streams across the Midwest, including one in Story County, New Year's Earring. And D N R data for over a hundred different chemicals. So there was a lot of information out there. And the city of Ames has been collecting monthly nutrient samples for over eighteen years. So we've been pulling all this together and starting to make sense of it. And that was one of the big challenges is that there was kind of an assumption that if volunteers or local folks are collecting data, that someone else, you know, the D N R university is going to make use of it. And that wasn't always the case. So we worked to pull together some guidelines for interpreting the data. Some of the issues that we're running together, running into is that, you know, we want to know if nitrogen and phosphorus are decreasing. And what we found is that it can be just so variable that depending on what day of the week or week of the month, you're out there. If you're not, if you're not careful about how you, how you look at this, you can get different conclusions depending on, you know, what day of the week. So that's the kind of thing that we're dealing with. And we are finding some good news in terms of nitrate going down. news in terms of nitrate going down in the South Skunk River. As you read the plan, you'll see we looked at a lot of different approaches for prioritizing data. This is, is trying to figure out where, where we need new data. This is West Indian Creek, just below Nevada. That was one that had never really been monitored before. We've started monitoring that. And in almost every case, almost every approach that we looked at had some weird little exception that made it hard to use. So we kind of relied on our common sense and experience. So for example, the impaired waters list gets a lot of attention, but we found that only five of the thirty-four streams in Story County had ever really been assessed. And so we've been looking at those other streams to see what's going on with those. So we thought it was important to test it at a city and county parks where people are accessing the water. I felt it was important to support volunteers all over the county who might be interested in their backyard stream. And then we've been collecting a lot of new data and figuring out where we can go moving forward. So we, Story County Conservation has assembled seventeen kids, have already been loaning those out to volunteers, including in, in the Nevada area. We've been doing volunteer events. We've been doing monthly lab testing, including one site in Nevada, one site downstream. And what we're finding is that the impaired waters list is just the tip of the iceberg and all but one of the streams we monitored exceeded the recreational standard, including West Indian Creek in Nevada. And so we're following up on that. We're working with ISU Chemistry Department to test optical brighteners, which are present in laundry detergent and can be a good, cheap indicator to, to tell us where we might have some human wastewater problems and hopefully, hopefully narrow down and address those. There were four goals and strategies, to increase awareness of water quality, to expand monitoring efforts across the county, to identify and promote actions that are going to improve water quality and resilience, and to strengthen our working relationships. Each of those has, has strategies and action steps associated with that and our group has already been, you know, assigning point people and making sure that we're, we're moving forward with all of those. So the, the plan is going to be released at the end of the month. If it's interest you, encourage you to read it and we'll be happy to come back and answer questions or to follow up with you on a individual basis. So appreciate your, your support for this project. Appreciate Jordan and Jeremy for, for helping us out with this.
Anything for Dan. Brings up resolution number seventy-eight, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving a cooperative agreement between Prairie Rivers of Iowa, I C and D and the City of Nevada for water monitoring in Story County.
Move to approve.
Brian, Jason, discussion. Sandy, non, council please vote. That is approved, which then takes us back down to reports starting the city administrative. I do not have anything. If you guys have questions for my report, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Moving on to my report, I should have typed something out because there's a lot that's going on. I'll let Jason take Lincoln Highway Days. There's a meeting today. The downtime thing, I think, went well. So thanks, Sean, for HR Green for doing that. There was a good turnout from downtown business owners to ask some questions. So it's always good to have that open dialogue. We are looking to do a community coffee online. Should have Dr. Lee's from Story County Medical Center on there with me to talk about COVID vaccines and where people in the community are able to get them, what kind of foreseeable tie lines might look like. Obviously, there's some, a little bit of guessing in there, but thought that would be some of the timing that would be of interest for this month. I believe we were looking at maybe next month, June one, live, I think, when we were talking about the Vision twenty forty, was that it? Okay. I was like, there was something for APH we were talking about. So speaking of Vision twenty forty, we got some good public feedback on that. So now we'll be looking to do a community-wide public type meeting to gather, to communicate the information gathering and input gathering. So a lot of people want online, some people obviously like to get feedback in different ways. So there will be a public meeting to gather input and also some small groups based on whether places where we have a keen interest or perhaps were not as high of respondents in the survey. So really wanted to boil down. So off the top of my head, some of those we wanted to do a small group around minority populations to make sure those, those voices were heard. We talked about move people to Nevada, you know, what drew them here. And so we can hear that subset, people who work here but don't live here and why that may be. And so John, your jury might have a couple of populations. I think there were six of them identified to do small groups with. So similar to that, where either they fit the community's priorities for growth or we wanted to make sure that they were a voice that broke through out of the, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people putting input. We wanted to make sure that if there were certain themes of subgroups that we were hearing that, so. Okay. The foundation community is to me is to build a way to roll with the silent phase of fundraising. So we'll be looking to do, to do some kind of a public event on that and kick off, turns that may, well, later in the spring, late spring. Yeah, maybe June. So watch for that. And yeah, like I said, the silent phase has been going well. There's some grant applications getting ready to go in. So hopefully we'll continue to see, see that be positive. There are a couple of different housing surveys that have been going on. So Sandy's been part of, part of doing those and I don't know if, John, if you want to, the county one came out and was finalized correctly and we have to, we're working on locally. So maybe so they understand the difference because people that have seen us, have made the first one on social media and why there was another one, so.
Yep. So we've got two different housing studies and surveys that are being worked on. So the first is the Story County Housing Needs Assessment that's actually getting reviewed by the Story County Border Supervisors tomorrow for adoption. That's identifying needs over the next twenty years projected for our community as well as every community throughout Story County. So that'll be coming out there. It shows, shows a need over the next twenty years of, I believe, five hundred and thirty-eight housing units. I think that's light. I think what the survey ultimately did and how they arrived at that is they looked at historic trends. The challenge is Nevada has historically grown slower than I think our capacity is. You look at a community like Huxley where their capacity has far exceeded our own for a variety of reasons. They've grown at a tremendous clip and they're projected to continue growing at that tremendous clip. Well, they've got some, some real infrastructure challenges that are going to probably slow their, their growth. So there's opportunity for us to effectively pick up that growth. So it'll be a balancing act across Story County, but, but that will be coming forward. Once it's approved, a colleague of mine is working on a kind of a standard presentation. So I'll likely bring that presentation back here to make to you all so that you understand exactly what the Nevada results show. The second piece was the Nevada Housing Readiness Assessment. This is a process that started with Jordan, Sean and I were looking at city codes that were existing and then meeting through a series of, of, through a series of meetings with a group that's focused specifically around housing and barriers to housing in the community to try and ensure that as a, as a, as a matter of policy, we don't have factors that are limiting our growth or things that we should be working to address in order to accomplish our housing goals. So that is the, the survey that is currently out there is to facilitate a little bit more conversation specifically around housing goals and housing needs in the community, specifically for Nevada. The Story County survey had, I think, a little over a hundred, hundred and fifty Nevada respondents. The hope is that we'll have a few more on this Housing Readiness Assessment that will help us kind of tackle that. So the idea being that these two studies together should create a synergistic relationship where we can both identify needs, attract developers, or get folks to expend the resources showing that there's a strong need there while also simultaneously removing any barriers that would be limiting that, that growth. So. Does you want anything more on that, Mayor?
I think that's good. Just wanted them to be able to answer questions if people are asking about those two things going on.
So, so John, whose voices do we need to hear?
Everyone's. So at the Story County Housing Readiness Assessment.
They disseminated now. I mean, is it, I got the, I got the stuff from Jordan. I'm trying to get that out into my network. Is there been any intentional printed documents that people can pick out, you know, to do that, participate like they could for our twenty-four day survey? Or is it just not?
So I'm not sure yet on the full distribution plan for that. It's, it's a bit more limited and has been kind of intentionally. So a portion of the, the responses that existed for both the Story County Housing Needs as well as our twenty forty will ultimately filter into this Housing Readiness. There's a number of questions that are kind of already handled as a component of that. So I think it's just trying to broadcast and get a few more responses on, on any of the answers that we can. So we are trying to broadcast that through the school system as much as we can, trying to capture folks that aren't in all of our networks, but trying to go through that to pick up some more. The challenge with all these surveys is we're kind of getting surveyed out. We've had a lot going very recently, but I think that the themes, regardless of, of the amount of surveys, I think the themes have been pretty, pretty on point. I think we have a pretty good grasp on them. The surveys are just helping to kind of confirm those pieces. So if there are voices that we haven't heard, that, that would be ideal. But I think we'll have the opportunity to hear those a little bit through this twenty forty survey as part of the focus groups. So we'll have an opportunity to hear from more of the minority groups in the community that will hopefully yield some results that will help filter into our housing conversations, whether they make it into the formal report that comes out. I can't, I can't say depending on timing, but at the end of the day, we'll make sure that those, those voices are well represented in the, in the actions that we seek to pursue.
Because that hits on Barb with some of your contacts. The, the respondents trended high on the income scale for the community. So we wanted to make sure we're hearing from service providers or underserved folks in the community, make sure we're picking up that voice too. Well, that, for the first harmony, those types of folks, you know, you're Elizabeth Gannister, Jody Hearn's, they want those voices to be captured and find out who they know who to talk to. So to get more respondents from different demographics. Okay.
Will do.
So moving on, I wanted to thank the, the English Chamber for setting up a meeting elected officially with Congressman Feenstra. So that was good since obviously there's less travel now going on, so it's still good to touch base with our officials. And lastly, we've been working with Main Street, they're looking at some electric vehicle grants. And so we have had some discussion about potentially utilizing a couple of spaces out in our parking lot for, for that, so, infrastructure. So that's all I have, I think. Any questions for me?
Okay, council reports.
We're at Lincoln Highway Days Committee meeting today, first one in quite a while. Actually, I'm really worried about things, kind of, the ball's starting to roll. Time's kind of getting real critical, but it's starting to get back going. I think we got a good jump on it today. Date should be August twenty-eighth. As far as location, that's not a hundred percent set yet. While the events that we've had in the past, we're going to have again. Done since I've been on the committee for the last year or so. Excited about what we're thinking, we're going to be able to bring to the town to help celebrate a whole year off of not having Lincoln Highway Days and honor day for a good celebration here in town. So we're looking forward to it. Pay attention, Lincoln Highway Days, what is it, the Lincoln Highway Days page?
On Facebook?
Yeah. So for all that information, keep, keep track on Facebook on Lincoln Highway Days page.
Sure, we'll send this post and we can make sure we get it shared from the market.
Yeah, we'll do a bus to show it through the city too. So we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, hopefully it'll be, be getting better than ever. So it's encouraging and knowing the state fair is moving ahead and the vaccine should be widespread. We're hoping that it can proceed. So hopefully there's no curveballs there. And if you have groups that would like to add an event to the festival, definitely send in either Henry or Jason or myself and we'll get them connected. That's the way it tends to grow is people have a really good idea of something that's missing that they would like to add. So where the five K came from?
Council reports.
Speaking of five Ks.
We just mentioned the Healthy Home Town group is meeting tomorrow, I believe.
Yeah, four thirty.
Four thirty.
Yep.
There we go. That's the program we're doing with Walmart. And I do know that they have a lot of grants this year, so maybe by next year we'll be eligible. I have to review a bunch of those grants, like a hundred and twenty-five communities applying for some big money. So hopefully this isn't just a get together and talk, that we're going to set ourselves up for some resources too.
And Sandy, I missed that, I don't know somehow, can you forward me the info? I can forward it to her.
Speaking of health and wellness, so Runners United Nevada is again doing their race series this year, same four races we did last year. Exciting announcement, last week we added Wade Hayes to our concert on May twenty-second. So it's Brian White and Wade Hayes. It's going to be at the fairgrounds. We're partnering with the JCs, they're going to do a beer garden to help them kind of recoup some of their losses from not being able to do one last year at Lincoln Highway Days. So it's a really good partnership for both, for both groups. Again, outdoor event, so opportunity to be able to spread out and not have to worry about people being too close together and all that. So it should be a really exciting event. We're also adding a number of one-mile races. We're partnering with Brick Town again to do a Donut Dash. We've talked about doing a pet-themed one-mile race, more people can bring their pets. Talked to the Masons about possibly doing one and then Main Street's also looking at something in December. So kind of going right along the lines of those, you know, things that help us look like a, or help us be a healthy community. You know, yeah, our organization, our board is doing really great work to advance that goal. And we've had a really great, great response so far too. Lots of new people signing up, so.
Yeah, and I need to be coached so we can get definitely the first one off the ground.
Yeah, I think that's the Brick Town, the Donut Dash, what we're planning on.
We wanted to do one of our own.
Oh, okay.
That is, yeah, no, I, I hope they're Brick Town, but we wanted to like have, help people find their way to us. Katie reached out to, I don't know, reached out to somebody. I thought neither you or Brad had answered. We just need details, okay.
Other reports? We have a staff report, so you're in a different spot. We'll start with Director Martinez.
Ran at eight, eight this weekend. First time to be outside for a long time.
Practicing for the five Ks.
It's hard. Not as young as I used to be. You got my report? If you have any questions, that's all I got for you.
On to Public Works.
Everybody, I don't have much. Just, we're going to interview Monday for the street job and wastewater superintendent. Hope we found the, the last water break today and we found it. I hope it's the last one, get that fixed. We started a few savings deal today with the school, thanks Jason for all the help. That's all I got. Anybody got any questions for me?
Thanks, Jeremy. Mark and Rick.
Just have one item for you. Weather permitting and working with Public Works, Jeremy is going to help us do some crack repair on the trail system. Could be maybe later this week if weather's good, if not, when we get a suitable weather pattern, we'll be doing that. So there'll be activity down there and filling some of those cracks and there'll be some, after it's done, there will be some sand or a paper product, paper product over where it's at. So people will just need to be aware, but we'll work with Marla and have her push that information out to the community. So when we do that, if anybody has questions for you. if anybody has questions for you, feel free to refer them to us. That's all I got. Unless you have questions.
Anything for Tim? Thank you. Thanks, Tim. On to Fire EMS.
Just a couple of things outside of my report. For the next three weeks, FEMA is doing all the grant reviews for assistance to firefighter, the fire prevention, the safety grant and safer grant. So hopefully we'll hear some good news from that. I'm part of the AFG grant team and spent this week reviewing grants and they did last year as well. So the other exciting news is the fire department is looking to upgrade our medical service to advanced care, paramedic level care. Dr. O'Laughlin is our medical director at Story Medical and Nick at New Care has been really good for our department. A lot of folks have to purchase their medications and drugs and then throw them away when they expire. And New Care has been very good about owning the drugs and then pulling them six months before they expire to try and use them in their network. So certainly not all of the medications we use will fit that category. But this is a significant deal. And so it may open up a new opportunity for them, but a lot of fire departments are in that situation. I can tell you that Bondurant probably wastes about $3,000 worth of drugs in a six month timeframe. So that's pretty significant. And we certainly appreciate those partnerships with Story Medical and New Care. We have five paramedics on the department. This is a conditional license. So when a paramedic is available and on the call, they can operate at that paramedic level. We truly believe that 90% of the time, if an ambulance is in town, we probably aren't going to be overly involved in the ALS side of things because that's what we have paramedics for. But I can tell you this week, an ambulance showed up with one person from a community and it was a B-level ambulance. So EMS and I was in, in a crisis. So it's nice that we're addressing that. The other news that we all agreed upon at the city level is there will be fireworks this year and the city is contracting out the traditional $8,500 worth of fireworks. So we currently have some folks in the community. Kathy Benson is working with the American Legion to raise some funds. But I think that'll be a really good partnership as well. So, thank you. Questions?
I'd like to applaud bringing in the assistant chiefs for putting together the EMS, the paramedic service. I think that'll be a huge benefit. One thing we're lucky is our volunteers have incredible training. So folks who have been at Lake Roy, for example, who was treating the locals and things like that, to turn them here would use his full skills rather than stand there and have to wait for an ambulance just because the law won't let him. I think it's huge.
Yeah, that, that's a situation where we find ourselves in quite frequently. Jeff Gilchrist is a registered nurse and a critical care paramedic and a flight paramedic and works in an ER. And Kyle works in Ankeny and in Bondurant and Carrie works at Boone and Ray Beatty works at Story Medical. So, so these are folks that aren't just volunteer paramedics. These are folks that actually have careers in the EMS field. So we're really excited.
And so the goal, just in case you get questions, is to stabilize folks, not to transport them or to compete with anything our hospitals are doing. It's to make sure that when they're there, they can stabilize folks until an ambulance can get there to transport them.
We will not be a transport service. We are going to extend and provide the advanced care prior to an ambulance.
That might be, just so you know, in case you get approached by folks in the community, is to have the difference. So we will go online to our librarian. Looks like Amanda is there.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Beyond the report, the other announcement is we are discussing our move to the next phase of our reopening plan, which we will implement next Monday unless something crazy happens with the numbers. And we will have more details on exactly what that will look like in the next couple of days. We're finalizing that and we will be sending out some things hopefully with the city block and through our channels of communication to let everyone know what that will look like. So there's just that in my report. If anyone has any questions.
Anything for Amanda? Seeing none, we'll go to Karen.
You have my report. I just wanted to again mention that FY '20 audit has been extended until June 1. And that was a request of the State Officer's Office.
Counsel, anything for Karen? Thank you, Karen. Move to Sean. Okay. Counsel, anything for Sean?
I don't have anything to add. I think engineering might though.
Oh, sorry.
I can see him right there.
Everybody's in different spots, so I'm getting thrown off a little bit.
I just wanted to let you know that Sean did a great job tonight with the downtown meeting. That work will start here probably next week if the weather holds. And we'll stand by and ready to help you, Sean, with any changes that might need to be made. 21 Streets, I'm going to meet with Manats tomorrow to talk about doing some coring on Lincoln Highway to make sure we understand what's underneath that pavement before we plan a resurfacing. So we'll, we're moving forward on those. We're making some good progress. So we should be coming back to you with some plans very soon on those street projects. On our forefront, I think the abandonment, abandonment of the Georgia Creek well, you'll have those plans probably next week to review as well. And then Mike Roth is with me as well tonight. So if you've got any questions on the sewer treatment plant, Mike's happy to answer that.
Counsel, anything for HR Green?
I just would be a little interested on what we decide on the white poll in Charlie's driveway whenever you guys look at it.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you both for coming.
All right. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else from council before we adjourn? Move to adjourn. Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.